Okay, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton School Committee for June 10th. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If everyone could please stay standing for a moment. Our neighbors in Portsmouth are going through an unimaginable loss at this time as a result of the porch collapse at the Portuguese-American Citizens Club last weekend. We're all aware of this. An event where people were celebrating one of life's true milestones, a high school graduation, turned quickly into a nightmare for everyone involved. In remembrance of the Portsmouth High School student who was killed in the collapse and with continued concern for those who were hurt, I ask everyone here to observe this moment of silence to support those who are going through so much at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no one signed up for open forum this evening, so we will move right into special recognition. I apologize. First up, we have Mr. Bill Phillips and the Tiverton High School Carpentry CTE students. And we would like to recognize them for the hard work that they did creating the sign for Picasset Hill Cemetery. And this is being put on tonight's agenda at the request of Mr. Bob Sodoma, who's the Chair of the Tiverton Cemetery Commission. So, Mr. Sodoma, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah.
Please press the button on the microphone.
First of all, just so everybody knows. My name is Bob Sodoma. I'm the Chairman of the Picasset Hill Cemetery Committee. I first like to thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight. Back in October, we discovered that we needed a new sign for the cemetery. The old one was pretty, it's seen its better days. So, one of our, one of the people on our committee, Dana Kurat, suggested that we contact the Tiverton High School woodworking class to see if they'd be interested in doing this. Jared Romano, who's our superintendent, stated that he knew Mr. Phillips and that they would contact Mr. Phillips to see if they would be interested in making the sign. Well, they did make the sign. It came out better than we could ever imagine. And I just, I just think that Mr. Phillips, and he has a list of the other people that are involved in this that I know he's gonna bring up, but I just feel that they, they need to, the town needs to know that, and the residents need to know that, this was a town project. It was, it was just fantastic work. The students did excellent work, and we could not be any happier or prouder of the way the sign came out. And we would like to say, we'd just like to thank Mr. Phillips and everyone involved that, who made the sign.
Thank you very much.
I will, I will be, I will be brief, but I was the lead person on this. This was a group project between the art students and Mr. Tracy, Mr. Gouch and the engineering students, and then the, my, my students, the carpentry students, the art students. They created the, the font and how the sign looks. Then they turned that over to Mr. Gouch's engineering students. They punched all, they did all their magic. They punched it into the computer so that we have a manufacturing machine that, that routed all of those letters and all of that good stuff on both sides. And I have a couple of students here. You guys just stand up for a minute if you would. Mr. Gouch is here as well. We have Cam and Jack. They were super involved with this project. Cam even helped install the sign just before our parade on the Tiverton Celebrates Day. So, just a, overall, a really great project. The kids were excited to, to do this. You know, we've done a couple of other projects in town. It's, it's great when, when we can, you know, kinda use all of the equipment and some of the knowledge that we have and, and all these super students. So, it really is a, a fun, fun project.
Thank you.
And I will say one more thing. In the Carpentry CTE, we have, you know, approximately fifteen or twenty partners, educational partners. They donate remnants. You know, sometimes it could be mahogany or gallons of paint or, you know, things like that. So, we're able to store that in, in one of our, our steel buildings out back, and we're able to use that type of material. So, it really didn't cost, it didn't cost the Cemetery Commission anything. It didn't cost, it was just, you know, we're, we're getting some nice supplies from our partners and we're able to use some of those things, and it's a, it's a win-win for everybody. So, thank you very much, and we'd be glad to, to help out anytime we can. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanna add one thing because I was, I was honestly tickled pink when Mr. Sodoma reached out to me. We, we should be, you know, our, our schools, obviously, are the lifeblood of our town. And our students here, today's students, our students in the past, and I expect our students in the future, we have a long history of giving back in so many ways from the kids that, that have gone through our system. We should celebrate them every chance we get. So, I, you know, I invite anyone, I understand you guys have done so much work in this project and several others as well. You know, just please keep, keep letting us know so that we can spread the good word. You know, our town, we need to act together, right? And, and this is one shining example how that can be done. And again, thank you, Mr. Sodoma, for, for bringing it up. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Go ahead, Kim.
I was waiting for Jocelyn. I just, I wanted, this is beautiful. I love the lettering on this. It's, it's great. Thank you for the picture because after hearing about how great this is, I would have to go down to the cemetery tonight after the meeting and check it out. So, I appreciate this picture. It's always nice to look at something like that. Again, great job. Thank you to the suppliers that supply the, the wood and the paint for this and the equipment and your guidance and the students. Obviously, they were, really put a lot into this, and it shows. So, thank you very much.
Mrs. Pavo?
I'd just like to say that this is only one example of our school pride and our community pride. Our, our students, our teachers, they take pride in everything that they do. When they get together with the students and help the community in a way they can, it, it makes me feel very, very proud to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for this effort, and thank you to the business partners that support the projects that you all do. Thank you.
Excellent work. Kudos to everyone, and thanks again. Thank you. Okay. So, next, we have another reason to celebrate. I, I suppose we could say celebrate this evening. We have a retirement recognition for Dr. Senkione. At the end of the school year, you know, we have a celebrating, a celebration every year for not only our teachers attaining professional status, but also our retiring employees. And this is something that Dr. Senkione himself put into place a few years back. He started this tradition, and one, it's one of several, honestly, that I hope will, will continue in the future, well into the future. With Peter's retirement date right around the corner, it's our turn to celebrate him and the many accomplishments that the Tiverton Public Schools have made under his leadership. And those, you know, it's, this is not an all exhaustive list, but I, you know, it's what we could come up with on the spur of the moment here. Improved graduation rates. AP Honor Roll recognition for the high school. Outstanding NEASC accreditation rating for the high school, which is as high as you can get. We have high post-secondary placements, up to, up to seventy-four percent in this current year. We've had an unbelievable expansion of our AP course offerings, which give our students the opportunity to, to earn college credits in advance of their actual college career. We have our Fort Barton Blue Ribbon, Blue Ribbon recognition that, that has, that came upon during his tenure. We've seen standardized testing improvements. Obviously, CTE expansion. That was something that didn't even exist when, when he came to us in, in 2018, and look at where we are now. I mean, tonight's celebration is just an, you know, an example of that. The digital transformation, you know, I, it's not lost on anybody, my, mostly myself, from where we were seven years ago as to where we are today with respect to technology. And obviously, part of this is in thanks to our current Technology Director, Danny Andrade, but certainly with Dr. Senkione's leadership. This is, you know, one of our shining moments, I, I feel, as a district. Robust staff professional development. I, you know, we put aside time every year to make sure that the staff has the, the latest and greatest in techniques and some of the more modern aspects of teaching. Multiple school safety upgrades. We've, we've enhanced our safety in all of our buildings, and this is no small feat, and it was under Dr. Senkione's direct leadership. I, you know, the fitness center and the locker rooms. We all, last fall, celebrated the opening of that facility. We all know that the condition that our locker rooms were in prior to that work was deplorable. It was, you know, as old as, as this school was and had been, there had been no attention paid over the years. And now what we have is a beautiful facility where, you know, sports teams can come in here and say, "Wow, you guys have a nice place," as, as opposed to, "Oh, do we have to go in there?" We have a strong collaboration and partnerships with both unions, and that's something we've enjoyed for a number of years now, and that is thanks to Dr. Senkione's leadership. And then last but certainly not least, professional learning communities. This is something that I had never, a term I had never heard until the, the last few years where Dr. Senkione implemented this practice where teachers can collaborate with one another. And when they are able to work together, it's all going to benefit our students, and it's, it has shown in, in the results. So, I, I thank you for that. As a member of this committee throughout your tenure, Peter, you know, I wanna thank you for your dedication, your collaboration, and your professionalism, even in the face of adversity, because Lord knows we've had a little bit of that. On a personal note, I wanna thank you for always answering my calls and doing your best to answer my never-ending barrage of questions and feedback. While I have been the Chair, he's been nothing short of collaborative, always putting me, putting the best interest of our, our children first. So, to wrap it up, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for serving our schools and their children. I wish you nothing but best in the future. And the cheesy parting gift that he instituted as part of his tenure here, he will get to enjoy now into his future.
Thank you, Dana. Recognize that.
Thank you, everyone. So, we will go ahead on to our consent agenda this evening. We have school committee minutes from March 25th, May 13th, both regular and executive session. Special meeting minutes from May 27th, both regular and executive session. We have correspondence, under correspondence, the Policy Subcommittee minutes from April 10th, and a school committee resolution from East Providence, speaking to Senate Bill S-0113. Lastly, we have a staffing overview summary and our June enrollment report. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have policy approvals. We have second read on two policies this evening. Policy 1201, McKinney-Vento Homeless, and Policy 566, Classroom Observation. Both are second reads. We, we discussed both during the first read. Does anyone have any questions remaining at this time? Okay, do I have a motion, we'll do it separately, to approve Policy 1201, McKinney-Vento Homeless?
I'll make a motion to approve Policy 1201.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 1201 is approved. I do have a question. Mrs. Craigery, you did put on the agenda, it's to replace 1200. We would need a separate, a separate vote to decommission 1200, so we're gonna put that on the agenda next time. If everyone could just make note of that. All right, so Policy 566, Classroom Observation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to general business. We have a Master Gardeners Program at Ranger School. I see Ms. Mullen in the audience this evening, and Ms. Griffin. Come on up.
Hi.
Hi. So, Christine and I wrote a grant at the beginning of this school year, and it was an NEA Foundation grant, and we were successful in the grant writing. And as part of the grant, we were going to become Master Gardeners. So, URI Officer Course, and we took the course. We started in January. It ended at the end of May, and once we complete our volunteer hours, we will officially be Master Gardeners. So, we just have our volunteer service hours to finish, and then it will be official. But we did this with the goal of creating a school garden at Ranger School. And so, we have the funds to create a school garden, and so, we have some plans. But part of this started, we wanna teach the kids about growing their own food. We wanna teach them about pollinators. We wanna teach them about plants, plant structures, vermiculture, and things like that. And Amplify Science has at least one unit in each grade that lends itself to outdoor learning, a garden classroom, and things like that. And Christine has done some of those things with her kindergarteners. You wanna share some of the things that you've done?
Sure. We, between the two kindergarten exterior doors, we have a small area where we have planted different types of milkweed plants. And so, we observe some years, the monarch caterpillars that go into the metamorphosis, and they come out as monarch butterflies. So, that's wonderful for the kids to see that hands-on part of it. We would like to expand so that we are including more native plants in, in addition to some fruits and vegetables, maybe a sensory garden.
Yep, and we'd like to make, so we plan on getting some raised beds, and it's really funny that Mr. Phillips and Mr. Gouch were here because we met with them and talked with them about building a structure around the raised beds because Ranger School has a lot of native fauna and friends in the back. So, we see deer and gophers and turkeys during the school day, and so, we know that if the students plant fruits and vegetables and other things, that the animals will enjoy them. So, we wanna make sure that our students are harvesting the fruits of their labor and not our animal friends. So, we feel it's really important that we build barriers to keep the animals out and our students in. And we wanna make it handicap accessible so that everybody can enjoy our garden, so that all the students can use the garden space, and, you know, so we can have a sensory area eventually. And we wanna make it so that it will grow with us. So, we wanna start small with some raised beds, but eventually, we'd like to get some herb buckets for the students so they can smell the herbs and taste the herbs. We'd love it if we could get enough, you know, fruits and vegetables growing where we could use them in our cafeteria, you know, and get the students doing some composting and things like that. Our cafeteria staff is really excited about it. Our custodian is very excited about it. You know, the other teachers in the building are really excited about it. Some of the parents have already talked to us about volunteering and getting involved. And so, we're just really both excited about this hands-on opportunity for our kids. I do a lot of math intervention, and there are just so many possibilities of weaving math into gardening and growing and learning. So, you know, this is really exciting. The middle school has a garden program. The high school has a CTE horticulture program going. So, we just see this weaving all the way through and bringing all levels of our schools together and our community. So, we think it'll be great.
One more thing.
Yep.
Amy and I were thinking, as she said, we have to do our 50 hours of volunteer service before we come, become official Master Gardeners. And one of the places that we can volunteer is the Veterans Home in Bristol. So, we're hoping to do some volunteering there and then maybe set up some type of collaboration between the kids at Ranger and the veterans.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, we've been very strategic in, in where we wanna do our volunteering. We've planned places where we can learn a lot and then places where we think we can connect our students and help them benefit some ways, too.
Wonderful.
Yeah. We're very excited.
Do you find you've both learned a lot of this URI program?
The URI professors are the ones that teach the courses, so it's a different professor who specializes in different areas of gardening. So, we've really learned...
A to Z.
Yeah, everything. There was so much to learn. So, yeah, it was fantastic.
And I'm, I, I think it's a, a great addition for Ranger School, and certainly in a town like ours that has a large rural component, I imagine you have parents that are ready to step up and, and help you with all of that. So, that, that's wonderful. And yeah, that was the first thing on my mind is like, oh, who's gonna eat that?
Yes.
I've experienced it myself, and my yard's fenced in, so.
Yes.
Good luck.
Yes, yeah.
Anyone have anything they'd like to add?
Yes, so, thank you for coming tonight. So, everyone's aware of the Health and Wellness Committee. We had invited you to come to our May meeting, but unfortunately, I had to cancel that. And I felt awful because I was so excited about what you were presenting and what you're working on. And I think Mrs. Craigery can agree that this ties into some other initiatives. We applied to join the Rhode Island Farm and Seed a School Institute, and a lot of the work that they do is exactly what you're describing. K to 12, how do we bring it to our kids, farm to table. So, I think it's just all happening at the right time. So, thank you so much for doing this work.
Yeah, we're excited. It should be fun, and we have a lot of parents that have a lot of knowledge, too. So, I think we can also learn from them.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, I thank you both for coming this evening, taking time out to share this with us. Just yet another good news piece for our community. So, thank you.
Vegetables than chickens, Amy.
I don't know if we're ready for the chickens yet. We're gonna start small first.
I can give you...
Maybe, don't count it out.
Exactly. I have a lot of strawberry plants, so if you wanna, want me to start propagating for you.
All right.
Very easy to grow.
Yes.
Kids will love it.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much. I've received a request to table the homeschool request item on our agenda this evening, so we're, we're not gonna take that one up. We'll skip over it. So, the next one would be Item C, Vote to Approve Salary Increase for Early Risers and Beyond the Bell. Dr. Senkione?
Thank you, Madam Sharon. As outlined in the document provided in your packet, we have two exceptional programs that serve the community well. Early Risers, which is a before-school program, and Beyond the Bell, which formerly was Tiger Cubs under Ms. Pavo, and we've sort of adopted it into the program here. Our employees in this program haven't received a raise in the last three years. So, tonight, I'm asking you to consider a $1 increase for all the employees who do the work on the ground with the children, and our director, a $3 increase from $31 to $34. As I outlined in the document to you, all this can be accomplished in the current budget framework. On existing enrollment, will not require any increase in fees for families utilizing the program.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the salary increases for the Early Risers and Beyond the Bell program staff?
Can I ask some questions?
After a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, and I will now open it for discussion. Kim?
Okay, um, I'm looking at this. I'm, I'm like really big into research. The program, I love the program. It's great that it can provide for our families, and it's definitely in need for a lot of our families. I think Chris has done a really great job getting it off the ground and running, and it's really grown to the point where now we have an afternoon program. Looking at this, I'm concerned with our TAs. Our TAs are getting paid less than this, and they actually have to be certified.
You're correct. As you know, we're in negotiations with Council 94. I think you'd see an adjustment in that once that contract is finalized. But again, we're focused on the people who are employed in this program. They haven't had a raise for three years, and I think a dollar is minimal at best.
Right, I'm just...
They're not part of that contract, Chris.
No, no. They work for us.
I have a question. Are the people who are employed in the programs, are they actually considered, they're not part of a contract?
No.
So, they are...
They're at will.
Yeah, so what I, my point is that I don't wanna say they're not actual employees of the school department, but it's, it's not the same. Well, to me, it's not the same. I understand your concern that our TAs who are under a contract, Council 94 contracts. I can't view it, I can't view it the same way.
Which brings me to another question.
Okay.
I've never noticed any of that on any of our financial statements, any of the, the revenue or the income. So, is this a separate program? Where is that accounted for? Is that accounted?
It's an enterprise fund. This is not part of the general fund.
It's an enterprise?
So, it's just like the lunch fund. It's a total enterprise fund, so it's separate.
Okay, and do we...
It's in here.
Correct. It's in the financials. It's an enterprise fund. So, basically, the idea, Kim, is any revenues offsets, offsets expenses.
Okay.
If there is, if there is a net, it's their own fund balance, et cetera.
Okay, so now, is, Chris is, Chris runs the program. I'm just, we have to vote on raises when it's really not...
It is under the school department's purview.
They're our employees. We BCI them, we sign them in, they go through payroll, they're, they're part of the school department.
Okay, I thought this was Chris's program, and that's what I was trying to wrap my head around, how this all works.
No, 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 it's our...
Chris is just the, the director.
It used to be separate, but we took it over.
It used, well, the afternoon program, the morning program has always been ours.
The afternoon program used to be separate, but we took it over. Yes, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I do have one question. Do you have a, an annual financial impact of this increase?
I don't, but I know off the top of my head this, this...
I don't know how many employees are involved?
Twelve to fourteen.
Twelve to fourteen.
Yeah, something like that.
And it depends on how many students sign up. You know, we have to have coverage, so it fluctuates.
It has, it has ran a positive fund balance in the last couple of years. Not much, not many dollars, but a positive.
Okay, so, we do have the quote-unquote savings base to be able to afford this?
Yes.
Well, there is a tuition involved.
Oh, the parents pay tuition.
So, yeah, so that would...
We are, yeah, I will say...
Just wanna make sure that the program is at least breaking even and that we can afford to do this under the current tuition.
It does break even. Yep, and some of that fund balance is being used to offset FY25 deficit as well.
Well, that's a separate conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, we had a motion, and a second. Is there any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
All opposed? We have four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Vote to Approve Athletic Turf Maintenance Bid and Contract in the Amount of $22,000. Mr. Andrade.
Thank you. In front of you this evening, it's the contract that covers us from July to November. When we went out to bid, two, we received two bids, one from DePonce and another one from another landscape company in Bristol. DePonce is currently servicing the town of Tiverton Fields. That's their contracted choice. When we went out to bid, it was for July 1st to November 30th. However, DePonce was nice enough to help us in the last month or so and drop their price a bit under our deficit circumstances. We do have one lawnmower that's down right now, so it was helpful for them to help us out the last month. I think they've done a great job, and it's given our custodian staff the flexibility to do other tasks that are needed. So, if proved, if approved, this request would free up our staff to other vital matters, cover maintenance issues promptly, and reduce custodial overtime. Again, our custodial staff is, I'll be honest, flat out, and there's many to-do list items, so this helps... So, if proved, if approved, this request would free up our staff to other vital matters, cover maintenance issues promptly and reduce custodial overtime. Again, our custodial staff is, I'll be honest, flat out. And there's many to-do list items. So, this helps them above and beyond. And it also helps us really down the line from a equipment standpoint. So, I ask that you guys approve this to move forward to do athletic turf maintenance just for the Tivon High School and Tivon Middle School Athletic Fields.
For the period of July 1st to November 30th of 2025.
Correct. Correct. And the amount of 22,000 even.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from Mr. Andrade.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Um, it says here turf maintenance. Are we getting turf or is that just what you're calling the field?
That's just what we call the contract. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Turf could be multiple areas, but yeah.
I'm thinking turf, turf.
No, no, no. I wish. We wouldn't need this.
Okay. Good point. I appreciate the amount of discount that DePonte is giving us. It's also very interesting to see the size of the area that needs to be maintained regularly. I appreciate those. Again, photos. It sounds great on paper. Have they started maintaining the fields?
They have.
They started in May?
Yeah. They gave us a, basically a free month because they're servicing the school department the same day they serviced the fields. So, basically what they do is they were here this morning. And then what they, in the afternoon, they go to Picasset and do those fields, not the school. Again, the town controls the Picasset fields.
Okay. My concern is that this is going to cause an issue with the union. Article nine says we can't use any.
So, Article 9.1 says we can as long as we have a full working staff and with no part timers. And number two, it also says that we can do this per athletic fields. Can't do this to, I can't hire someone to cut the Tivon High School grounds. But I can hire someone to do athletics because it's extracurricular activity. And this has been discussed with the union as well.
And they're in agreement with this?
They haven't came back and complained. They haven't filed. I explained this to them. That's why it was off the table last time. I wanted to give them the consideration of explaining this to them, how we see 9.1 and how this is not taking away jobs. It's really helping them do other tasks and get other tasks done.
In the buildings.
Unfortunately, we cannot, I can't pay overtime and hire someone at $22,000. You know, basically a step one custodian would be about 26 and change plus benefits, medical pension, all that good stuff. So, this is a way to handle our maintenance of our fields. Just to give you a, a scope of one day's work is, there could be two games going on. And we have a half custodian along with Mr. Mendy's who need to cut fields, line fields, weed whack, blow. You cannot do that in 48 hours. 428, I know I put that together. So, with this help, you have Mr. Mendy's lining fields. You have Kevin cutting the outside grass. You know, that would be on the other side of the fence, basically, and doing those things where it's now keeping, I'm just using the high school as an example. Now, it's keeping the two custodians that used to help out inside the building, getting the building clean. So.
I understand the logistics. I'm just, I just want to prevent a possible lawsuit, in essence. If that was to happen, we would lose. We'd be paying twice for the same service.
Has Mr. Scogio looked at this?
Looked at the contract?
Yeah.
Uh, I can't remember if he did.
No, but if I may add, I did speak to Attorney Napolitanal Silvio.
Oh, okay.
And he looked at it. And we pointed out the two covenants that Brendan's mentioned about all staff working at full capacity and extracurricular activities allow us to do this. And he sort of nodded to us. I can't guarantee they're not going to do anything, but I didn't get a sense they would. And then secondly, just to remind the committee that last year during FY '24, when we made budget cuts, we had a full-time outside guy, you may recall. We cut that to half-time. So, he's half in, a half out. And we're just learning that, you know, as we continue to cut staff, these are the byproducts, that things can't get done. And this is something that has to be done.
Okay. Um, the one thing I do want to point out is, you know, it, it's been said on several venues, in several venues. The conditions slash curb appeal of our schools is really something that's so critical in order to maintain our enrollment. You don't want people saying, oh, look at that Tivon High School football field. What a dump. Right? We, we all recognize that. And, and, you know, having the, we've made the commitment to athletics. So, we have to maintain that commitment to up, keep the facilities, including the grass, up to, up to par. So, I am in full support of this. Is there anyone else that has any comments they'd like to make?
I do.
Go ahead.
Not only does this ensure that our fields are in top-notch condition, it's going to help the interior and exterior of these two buildings, of these schools. I've had several people, you know, approach me in the grocery store or at the park.
I think we all live in the grocery stores in Tivon.
I don't know. My husband tells me I go to the grocery store too much. But that's where I talk to people.
We're targets.
This is going to help the custodians be able to do the work that they were employed to do. Not that the fields on the outside is not. I'm, I'm, I am so in favor of this because I've seen the conditions of these fields go downhill for many, many years. This is going to take stress off of the custodians who need to go in and paint or fix doors or do whatever they do. I, I see it as a win-win situation. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If there's no other comments, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, four to one. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have item E, vote to approve first student transportation contract. Mr. Andrade?
So, in front of you, you have your transportation agreement. Pretty lengthy, but a couple of things to point out. One being the term is over three years with the renewal option of two years. However, first student did not budge on the year-over-year increase in that fourth or fifth year. So, right now I am only proposing to approve the three-year. We, we can visit the, the later years, the two additional years later anyway. But my thought right now, if I had to make an answer, I would be staying with the three years and probably going out to bid instead of going into the fourth or fifth year. Next is they, they are taking over our statewide transportation as we discussed for significant savings for statewide of almost $200,000 as the budget reflects. Part of this, I did some negotiations where, long story short, they're offering us a $12,500 credit on our first invoice. That's kind of their good faith estimate because there was some pricing that other companies were cheaper than them. That's the idea around that. And they were willing to work with that. So, that was, I thought, a good, a good peace offering, a peace offering if you would. Lastly, is, there's a section, I don't have it in front of me. There's a section, not lastly, but another piece is a section where school committee and the administration has final say on routes. They have to present us routes 30 days before the start of school. And they, we have the final say on those routes. So, hopefully in August, we can have them in front of you to discuss those routes. And we can make a final decision before the start of school on those routes. We can do it a little earlier if they get them done, but that's just what the contract says right now. The other thing was I did a fuel adjustment based, working with Attorney Scogio. And we adjusted the price to six cents per gallon difference. We used to be at four. It's not much, but with the fluctuation of gas, I, six cents is better than four, obviously. And that was using a fuel adjustment consultant with our consultant team that we use for this contract. And then lastly, another win, I would say, is for statewide transportation, which they consider auto-district transportation for special education. They want to use a minimum of six hours. And I adjusted that down to four hours. And they accepted that with excess hours billed in 50-minute increments. So, as you guys know, based on this upcoming year, there is a 3% increase, 4%, and then the two 5% for the optional years. But with all the savings, one being bringing statewide in-house along with some route consolidations, one being Picasset now hosting both pre-Ks next year. We're down to one bus. So, that eliminates a bus. That eliminates a monitor. That was a savings of about $60,000 for the year. We are in conversation with partnering, partnering with Bristol Warren. Portsmouth was in the mix, too. But their auto-district placements have decreased. So, they don't have as many. So, they're going to stay with statewide. But we hope to partner with Bristol Warren. And that could include some additional savings. But as of right now, we have to proceed accordingly with this contract. So, we can start using them instantly for our ESY summer program. That's part of, usually part of statewide. Any questions?
I'll start first. Madam Chair, by making a motion to accept the recommendation of Mr. Andrade.
I'll second.
Okay. Now, we'll open it up for discussion. Jocelyn, do you have anything?
Yes. So, I'm looking at section six, 6.1. Contractors shall furnish district a complete route map 15 days before the first day of school. And then we reserve the rights to establish final schedules. That's a pretty tight window of time.
Yeah. As I mentioned, they, they kept it there, but they promised us to do about 30 days.
Can we get that in writing?
Um, I can ask them.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think, given the changes that we're realizing with our schools, I would hope that we can find some savings and some route consolidation.
Yeah. I'm sure they have no problem changing that. They've accepted everything that Attorney Scogio and I have done.
Thank you.
And understand, right, if we go up to 30 days before the start of school, this will mean that we would need a second meeting in July. Because now we're backing into July for that 30-day window. And I don't have a problem with meeting twice in July. But just so you know, we typically have one meeting in July as opposed to two. So, let's see what we can work out with them. Brendan?
Absolutely.
I know it's something that we had all been hoping to have, is, is that meeting with them and with the redistricting to realize some savings.
Yep, yep.
Anyone else?
I, I just want to comment. Brendan, this so long has been just such a huge, huge expense. And I know we had talked about it at one of our finance meetings. And we'd talked about it before, how much work you've put into digging in this contract, working with them, trying to find those savings, bringing back that, that out of state. And, and I just want to, you know, commend you. I understand it's your job. But commend you for all of the hard work because this has just been a, a, a lead balloon for, for so many years, this, this contract. And, and I, I love the direction it's going in.
Yeah. I appreciate that. And I will mention that Ms. Crager and Ms. Olet, along with Peter, have a lot to do with it, too, with obviously special ed. So, I thank them for a team effort in getting this in-house. And I hope it succeeds its expectations. So, can't speak, but hopefully it succeeds.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous and approved. Thank you. Okay. Next up, Mr. Andrade. We're going to keep you on the hot seat this evening with the FY '24 audit presentation.
Yep. So, we did complete the audit report in May. It was presented to the town council at their, what are we, in June? So, their May meeting, not their previous, not last night's meeting, the night before, the meeting before last night. There was no findings. It was a clean audit opinion. And we, we complied with federal funding, specifically IDA. That was their audit. Every year per ride in federal funding, they have to do a audit report on a certain fund. They pick five funds. The school got picked for two. IDA was the biggest. The town was the other three. But the school had two of the five and both had no findings. We did make some, I wouldn't say significant, but we did make some changes. We had some audit adjustments. As you know, I wasn't here for FY '24, but I did complete the audit when I came on board. It did take a little bit of time since I was new to the school department. And the audit firm had a new manager on the audit. I believe the previous audit manager was on the audit for five years and they had to switch. The partner was still the same. But thanks to Denise Sarette as well, we, it was a team effort in getting this done for Town of Tivon. So, any direct questions you may have, I can answer. Or if anything comes about when you read this long audit document, please feel free to email me. But I can take any questions this evening.
There will be a quiz.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Really quick.
Okay.
So, this is done annually?
Correct.
This is not the audit that the town wanted of the school committee?
Nope. That's a separate audit.
Okay. So, this is done separate. Okay.
Yeah. The town audit was with Markham, who is now CBiz. That was more a internal control audit. This is a annual financial report that is required by the state of Rhode Island. So, this gets sent to the orders general for review, Division of Finance, et cetera.
And it's done annually?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. The reason you have three reports is there's the annual financial report. UCO is also audited. And then you have your single audit report.
I did, and, and I, I have looked through these documents online. So, I don't have any specific questions right now. But I, I did speak with Town Administrator Jones after they had the presentation and asked him, you know, in, in the future, perhaps give us a heads up so that we can be there and perhaps ask questions of the auditors themselves. I, I feel that, you know, we're, we are basically spending, what, two-thirds of the town's money. That, you know, to be left out of that entire process, I, I don't think really sits that well with me. So, I'd like to, for us to, you know, have the ability to go and ask the questions when they make that presentation. And, and he agreed that that's probably a good idea. So, hopefully next year we can make that happen. Great job, sir. I know it was your first year and it was a difficult one for you. But you, you, again, working collaboratively with the town's treasurer, which is, you know, a big win, got, got us over the finish line with this. So, thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda, year-to-date, May 2025 budget versus actuals. Brendan, you again.
So, not much changed this month, finally. Obviously, June's our final month of fiscal year '25. So, we're at the end. So, real quick, and then I can answer any questions if there is any. But year-to-date spending is $32 million, about 86% of the FY '25 projected budget. The usual areas are the primary increases. Right now, we have a month-over-month projected deficit, which was flat. And the year-to-date is, excuse me, the year-to-date is $780,728. However, if you watch previous school, town council meetings, along with being in front of you folks, I am projecting a shortfall a little higher than that of 850 to 900, which is still approximately about 50% less than the initial shortfall in September following the conclusion of FY '24. So, any questions? I can take those.
Just thank you again for the, you know, the good work putting this together for us and providing the town with really an increased level of transparency around the school district spending. And again, kudos to the district for monitoring things and really holding the line on spending this year. I know it's been difficult. So, I'm looking forward to July 1st. At what, understanding that the audited financials are going to take a significant amount of time, right, for FY '25? We just got FY '24 today. At what point will you have a level of comfort that you can say X is the final deficit for FY '25?
I never like to do that with audited, audited financials. But we'll probably have a good handle. handle by August 1st. Yeah, yeah, we got to figure out accruals, especially as I mentioned, the summer program, et cetera, because even though school's ending, summer ESY program continues, so. So yeah, August 1st or August, you know, say 15th, hopefully.
So we will have to, you know, I'm just looking, looking down the road for when we'll need to meet with the town again.
Yes.
To discuss how we are going to respond to the FY25 deficit.
Correct.
The FY26 budget will begin on July 1st, and so we will no longer be talking about a deficit on an ongoing basis, at least, I hope not. So again, thank you very much for this. Good to see that we haven't had any unexpected changes this month. Anyone have any questions? No? All right, thank you. We are moving through this. All right, Mr. Andre, last one, FY26 budget update.
So nothing in front of you this evening, just a brief update, is last night, I went to the town council meeting, they approved our capital request in the amount of $312,605, so I thank them for that. That is helpful to offset FY26. They did make it known that they do want to do away with this type of capital request in the future. I am hopeful that we do. It might be difficult to do it instantly, because you're taking $300,000 really out of your operating and kind of going right into a deficit quickly, but hopefully we're able to do that at a lot less scale. I can't really speak until we start doing the planning again. I've done a little planning, but obviously, things have changed, and we're still in negotiations with Council on I-4. And the preliminary, basically, not the preliminary, but the second round of the budget was approved, and now we have to wait for the third round, which is part of the state of Rhode Island. Yet last night was the charter review approval, essentially. So we're still at the 3.5%. We balanced our budget today with the approval of capital. We had a lot of layoffs, but we're moving forward, so. We hope to, hope to have a, we'll say, a final, final budget in front of you folks at the July 8th meeting, I believe it is, the next meeting, which I think is July 8th. And you would have 30 days after the state of Rhode Island adoption. We do have to adopt within 30 days of that, so.
So the state of Rhode Island's adoption needs to happen before June 30th, right?
Correct.
So we will have the month of July to, quote-unquote, tinker around with the line items, per se, and set our final line item budget at that time. I do want to, you know, express my thanks to the town council for giving us these capital funds for the second year, you know, for our technology needs. And I also would very much want to see us get away from that practice as quickly as we can. I was, I'm not in favor of it. I think that it's, you know, these are not special, one-time purchases any longer, right? Technology is an ongoing expense for any school district, including our own, and it's something that we have to be able to build into our operations and our operating budget as really an important part of education. So we'll start working on that as we go forward in this next year. Does anyone else have any comments for Mr. Andre on this, or questions? No, and thank you for attending that meeting last night. I know it went a bit late, so appreciate that. Okay, next up, we have vote to approve potential changes to Article 11 of the Tiverton Charter. So I ask that this be placed on the agenda. The Charter Commission is currently meeting on a, I think they're going to be stepping it up to biweekly meetings going on for the next several months. I went to their meeting last week, I think it was, and asked them, you know, how, how do we interact with you? How do we perhaps make suggestions for the Charter Commission to changes to the charter, et cetera. So I have an appearance in front of them scheduled for July 1st at their meeting. It'll be at the Tiverton Library. What I would like from all of you is to, and I did include this in your package, is the current provisions as they pertain only to the school department. Obviously, as residents of Tiverton, we may have interests in any number of articles that are in the charter, and that's fine. If you have suggestions that you would like to make on other articles as citizens, you have the ability to attend their meetings and make those recommendations. But I felt that as it pertains to the school department, that if we have, as a body, any changes that we would like to propose, that we do that collectively. I, for example, you know, and this is something I think I proposed the last time, but it never made the priority list, and as such, didn't go through. In the first school committee section, you, you know, again, this is just an example, right, talking about the last sentence, "The school committee shall annually elect a chair, vice-chair, and any such officers as they deem appropriate." Well, we all know in practice, it's not annual, it's biannual, right, just after the election. So I would like to, you know, suggest perhaps that we change, recommend that the language be changed there, something more akin to, you know, in line with the biannual elections. So I know that we haven't, you know, spoken about this before now. Does anyone have anything off the top of their head that they feel that we should focus on as changes, or are you all good with what you see?
I guess my big issues are the budget ones, which aren't in this, so that would be a separate conversation for me to show up and discuss, but we're, because we're just focusing on this, right?
I think as a, as a body.
Right.
That really should be, and is the limit, right, to what our business is. As, again, as citizens, we all may have opinions on other articles, and to your point, I also have.
I'd just like to see it definitely.
Yeah, and that's definitely one of those items. Right, right. So again, I will intend to attend that meeting on July 1st. We will be having another meeting next week. Do we want to come back and discuss this briefly? If anyone has suggestions that they would like to see incorporated, and I'd be happy to bring those to the Charter Commission if we all agree?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, but I do wonder, Madam Chair, is if we really could, since you're going, as our representative, if the majority agree, discuss the issue with the deadline. I mean, that is.
It impacts us.
It impacts us, it impacts us every year. We have to do layoffs by June 1st, and I don't think that, I mean, if the majority are in agreement, I don't think it would be out of bounds to ask our chair, who is going, to explain that to the body. I don't know that they can do anything about it, but just explain to them the difficulties that we, we experience because of that deadline.
In, in full transparency, I had planned to address that issue as a private citizen.
Now you can go as the chair.
I can, you know, if you, if you all feel that that, because it is, it's a concern, right? We, we have a June 1st deadline for layoffs every year, and.
Ninety-four, two weeks before the close of school, which is almost June 1st.
Pretty much the same, right? And where we don't have our appropriation with lockdown certainty, there is a certain amount of angst.
Yeah, I just think, there's no objection that it's appropriate for the chairman of the school committee to, as representative of the school committee, to, you know, at least explain to them the difficulty that that puts in before us by having that date be so, so late, and any improvement they can make on that date would be an improvement for us.
I'm happy to do that. Are there any other, again, if you have any other changes, I can put it on our agenda for our next meeting, and it can be as much as, do you have changes? Yes or no? And if there are none, I will just continue and move on. But I do intend, just to say, you know, that I will ask for the changes to the annual versus biannual language. Let's get it in line with what current practice is. That's all I have on the charter issue. So are we taking a vote to, can I have a vote? You know what, let's table the vote for today. We'll put it on the agenda for next week and handle it at that time. But that's the background, and if everyone could give it some thought, I think I would appreciate that very much. All right. The next two items, we are going to take up after executive session, and that would be, first, to vote to approve administrative contracts, and then second, to vote to approve one layoff and one non-renewal. So at this point, the announcements for future meetings, we have a meeting here tomorrow night, June 11th, at which time we are going to, we intend to celebrate our state champion girl softball team, and I, that's, love the celebrating, and, you know, they're putting our school in such a positive light, I couldn't be any happier for them. And we will also, at that time, take a vote to appoint our new superintendent. So that'll be a special meeting, that'll be here tomorrow night. Our normal next meeting is scheduled for June 8th, however, I will be looking to schedule another meeting next week so that we can ratify the new superintendent's contract prior to July 1st. And so what I will do is reach out to you and see what everyone has for availability next week. After that, we do have currently, our next regular scheduled meeting is July 8th, and we'll, we'll leave that one there for now, at least, and talk about that.
Madam Chair, because I was absent at the beginning before we move into executive.
Yep.
Dr. Sanquioni, I just want to express my very best wishes to you and your retirement. I have nothing I was listening to in the car that I certainly can add to what Chairman Farnworth said, but my very best wishes to you, and my utmost thanks for your commitment to our students.
Thank you. All right, so at this point, we are going to go into executive session. Any individuals being discussed in executive session have been given advance notice and an opportunity to have such discussion in open session. I would like a motion to enter executive session under Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2, Administrative Contracts, 4246-5A1, a non-renewal, and 4246-5A1, Superintendent Candidates Discussion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Deb?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Am I yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're in executive. Thank you.